Not moving, here we go. Ready? I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under a individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary's here, she'll be joining us in just a minute. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So may I?
No, it's okay. By Amy, second?
Second.
By Michael, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? That passes. Mary, did you say aye?
Aye.
Okay, seven zero. Truth and taxation, portion of the business meeting. Julie, sync.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Stallow. Tonight we'll be doing our truth and taxation where the Board will approve the final levy certification for the 2022-2023 school year. On tonight's agenda, we'll talk about the levy cycle, our basic school funding. Some factors contributing to the levy change are pay, our 2021 pay-22 levy certification. There are some graphics for tonight's meeting as well, and our current budget. So as you know, something different about schools compared to cities and counties. As the Board certifies their levy here in December, it gets paid by our taxpayers in the calendar year of 2022. However, the school district's budget isn't, the money isn't for the current year budget. The money is for the 2022-23 budget year. And so it is different because tonight, you're going to see the budget for tonight, but it's our current year budget. And this levy certification is really for next year's budget. So that is something that's very different from cities and counties. Whereas they're going to bring next year's budget, that levy affects their next year's budget, and you're seeing that all combined. School districts don't have that same levy cycle. So the basic formula for calculating our state aid is our authorized total revenue minus our local property taxes, and that's, and so the remaining is state aid. So some factors impacting our tax change, those issues driven by state level decisions, so anything with a change in the state formulas, changes in sales ratio impacting our adjusted net tax capacity, and any laws mandating code compliance. Some issues determined by district voters, any voter-approved bond referendum or excess levy referendum, or capital projects levy. A capital projects levy would also be a technology levy. And so those three voter-approved levies would affect this final tax levy. And then local factors, any inflationary pressure on real estate market, because we know that the levy affects our local taxpayers, abatements, property improvements not previously taxed, changes in individual assessed market value, and possible changes in classifications such as homestead is now rental property, so it changes the tax for that particular property. What's included in the school district's levy? So the district's levy is our voter-approved levy bond and capital projects that have been approved in the past, levies set by state formula. So the majority of, if it's not voter-approved, the majority of the levy for school districts is set by state formula, so the legislature sets our levies. So equity, operating capital, transition, community service, and long-term facility maintenance. And then this, there are some authorized by the state based on our local need. So whatever we need for reemployment, safe schools, achievement and integration, our career and technical, any facilities that we need to lease, integration and Q comp. So one of the factors, or a couple of factors actually, that contribute to any levy changes are the district's adjusted net tax capacity increased by 5.8%, and the referendum market value increased by 6.6%. And we also had an increase in our pupil units. So those three factors will affect the final levy. As you can see, adjusted net tax capacity analysis, this, you can see, has been increasing since 2012. We did see a decline during the recession in the early 2009, 2009, 2010, until 2012, and then you see the increasing over the past 10 years. And same, the market value also is showing the same trend in an increasing referendum market value. So this is for Prior Lake Savage School District. So it includes the cities of Prior Lake, some portions of the cities of Prior Lake, some portions of the city of Savage, Credit River, and township.
Spring Lake.
Spring Lake, thank you. We talked a little bit about our enrollment. We talked about this a little bit earlier, but you can see our 2021-22 projections were 8,852 students. On October 1, we had 8,809, and today, as of December 1, we had 8,774. We typically see that decline in enrollment throughout the year by about 75 students. Our enrollment history, you can see that we've been a growing district for several years, and we had that dip last year simply due to the COVID pandemic. Our pay 21, or 2021 pay-22 final levy certification, and I'm going to go through some of these. When I presented this in September, we had a preliminary levy certification of a little over 3%, so 3.2%. That has decreased since that time because the district refinanced two bonds. And so you're going to see that we decreased our levy certification from 3.2 to 2.6 overall for the total levy. So as we go through this final levy certification, you'll see some differences from when I presented the preliminary levy to where we are today as the final levy. Our local optional, that's $724 per pupil unit, and that, because we had an increase in pupil units, you can see that increase this year. Equity levy isn't, the equity we were talking about earlier. School districts are, or the state is required to have similar revenue across school districts, and so when you have less revenue, you get a higher percentage of this equity levy, and it's between 5 and 95%. And we are definitely in the lower quadrant of that, so we have a higher equity levy than a lot of school districts do. A transition levy, that's a very small portion, and that is really grandfathered in old laws where they combine them all into this transition levy and give us what, if you would have gotten something less when the new law changed, they kept you at the old amount, and so that's what this transition levy is. We have our operating capital levy, that's determined by the legislature, how much is a levy and how much is aid. And so you can see we have about $750,000 in operating capital levy. Same with our long-term facility maintenance, you can see that declined a little bit because they take, they've taken into consideration the age of our buildings now, and so that's gone down a little bit in our long-term facility maintenance. We've never been at the full amount of revenue that we could get for long-term facility maintenance because our buildings are a little bit newer than other districts, and so we are prorated because of the age of our buildings. For our levy referendums, these are our voter-approved referendums for operating. We also have Q comp, this is the levy portion of Q comp. We have our reemployment levy at about $127,000. Safe schools levy, $380,000. Our career and technical is 133. We do have some leased facilities, which we know is the 2014 portion of our high school, as well as our fields, our turf fields. Our achievement and integration levy, we receive about a total of $800,000 in achievement and integration revenue, and this is the levy portion of it at $250,000. Facilities and equipment bond adjustment has gone down, and we have some small prior year adjustments. For Fund Four, Community Service Fund, that hasn't changed, that's $706,000. It's up by about $56,000, and the main reason is that, for that, is because the census came out, and as we grow, that number changes based on that census. And then our debt service fund, that has decreased since that preliminary levy, and that is mainly due to the refinancing of those bonds. So as you can see, we were anticipated to be about $36,161, we're at $35,937, so it's a 2.6% increase in the district's taxes. That does not mean that someone's taxes will go up 2.6%. That means when we, the county distributes the taxes across to all the properties in the Prior Lake Savage School District, that's the percent of increase that will be across all properties. And a lot of people will see a decrease in their taxes, and mainly because the ANT-C, the adjusted net tax capacity and market values have gone up higher, they're up 5% and 6%, where this property, our levy, is only going up 2.6%. So you can see, here's the three portions together, the total general fund, the total community service fund, and the total debt service fund increases. So you can see that voter-approved portion is about 57% of our total levy. State determine is 32%, and that local discretion that the school board has discretion over is 11%. The district's 10-year levy history, you can see in 2017-18 is the year that the voters approved the bond and operating referendums, and that's the year that that went up, that 18.57. Other than that, it's been below 5% since 2012-13, and even before then, it was, sometimes it went down. So this year it's at that 2.6%. This is the revised budget that I presented earlier that you haven't voted on yet, but this is what we anticipate to be the final levy for the current year. Again, the levy that you will approve tonight will not affect this budget, it will affect next year's budget when the Board approves that next June. So this is the general fund budget, and you can see our revenues are $110 million, and our expenses are $112 million. We still anticipate that the district's fund balance will be 11.7% at the end of this year. And then these are all other funds, food service, community education, our building construction fund, debt service, trust fund, custodial. If you have any questions on that, please let me know. That is our truth and taxation. Any questions?
Questions, Mary?
If we fill the staffing requirements that we anticipate or want to fill, would that still leave our fund balance at the 11.8% that you just estimated? Because I know we had a lot of open positions that...
We do currently have a lot of open positions. There'll be some other things that we'll bring forward later tonight that will affect our budget. I'm hoping that we will end up better than that. We are unable to fill many positions throughout the district. Food service is one of them, so that may affect the food service budget. Paras and custodians were having a difficult time filling those positions, as well as substitute teachers. And so those are areas that we have budgeted as if we had those positions, and right now the district isn't, is not spending some of those funds for those positions because we can't fill them.
Any other questions, comments? This is the portion of public comments regarding truth and taxation. Is there anyone that wanted to address the truth and taxation portion of the meeting? Comments to the Board? Okay. Seeing none, move on to the next item, which is our open forum. And our open forum is according to Board Policy 203. It's a 15-minute time period set aside to receive citizen input through the open forum segment. Input from students, staff, parents, community members is valuable, and the Board appreciates taking time to speak with us this evening. Excuse me. Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual Board members, employees, or students. Normally speakers use vulgar or profane language. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules will lose their privilege to speak. Board members will listen respectfully to presenters but will not engage individuals during this time. The Board will not deliberate or take action during the open forum regarding an issue presented. If any follow-up is needed, the superintendent or designee will get back to you. The vice chair clerk will put up a yellow card when you have 15 seconds left and a red when you need to stop. When you come and speak to the Board, if you could please state your name and your relationship to the district. Rick Storey?
Thank you, Board, for hearing me. Good evening. This is a follow-up to an email that started back in June 25th, asking for some clarification on the equity resolution for some definitions. And the definitions were provided, so thank you for putting those out there. I did have some, just looking at the definitions here that are now on the website, had some additional questions after looking at this specifically as it relates to equity. And hearing the conversation that happened here earlier with you all, I think your hearts are in the right places. I think you mean well, but I really don't think that you know what's going on. And when I look at these definitions here of equity, I see now why our kids are hurting the way that they are hurting. And you are the leadership in this community, and you have failed every single one of the children in our schools. Have you looked at the definitions? Let's just break this down a little bit. You use the word resources now four times, a new definition of which you have yet to define. Cultural equity and social justice is about distributing resources fairly and treating all students equitably so that they feel safe and secure physically and psychologically. Equality in education is achieved when students and staff are treated the same and have access to similar resources. Equity is achieved when all students receive the resources and support they need so they graduate prepared for success after high school. Equity is achieved when all staff receive the support and resources they need to succeed in their role in professional development. So let's look at the word resource. What does that mean? Money? I suppose it could. Training? Material possessions? But it also means authority and power, doesn't it? So in my world, there is only one who is equitable, and that is God. God gives you exactly what you deserve and what you need. So now, somebody is in charge of resources. Somebody's in charge of money and power and authority and training for our students. We do not change behavior based on somebody playing God. We change behavior one heart at a time. You're not going to change behavior by having coffee and conversations to the same group of people. You're going to change behavior by students understanding one another and getting to know the heart of the other student. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Lavish.
Three minutes?
Yep.
Right on, let's see if I can do this.
No naughty words.
So, I'm not going to use the mic either. Start me right now. Our lives begin to end the day that we become silent about things that matter. So with that being said, Terry, do you check your voicemail? We did happen to call you 28 times, so I don't know if that works, or if you need to call the IT department, but I also know that all of you are aware of the event that we just had, and the students have spoke directly to elected officials, considering five of them were your students and parents, and actually, one of them was a previous Prior Lake teacher for 16 years. So for the fact that none of y'all showed up, but your constituents were there, speaks a lot. So you guys have this man up here, he's only worked here for five months, and this has been going on, this racism has been going on since the school's inception, but this man who has worked here for five months is going to solve the problem. We called every single school board member, Enrique was the only one to answer, but he's somehow unable to do anything outside of Terry's direction. So he's in a box, he's stuck, even if he wanted to do something, Terry, he's not able to because he's working under the pressure of your racist thumb. Now, that's not what I'm here to talk about.
That's enough. It's not disparaging comments against the superintendent.
I'm going to address accountability. Racism isn't a swear word.
No.
Put an asterisk on racism next time. If I can't call it like it is, how can we do it? As the leader, you got to take extreme ownership, Terry. What goes right and what goes wrong all falls on you as the leader. Not only is there no accountability, but you are making it more difficult for people to hold you accountable. As you take away their rights to be here, you are actively punishing...
We're not doing disparaging comments.
You are actively punishing parents, students, and even teachers. These aren't disparaging comments, these are quotes. Previous speaker just mentioned teachers don't even know how to handle this system. All of this falls on you, Terry. Your unwillingness to take accountability is hurting your community, and this is the very community you're here to serve. In a way to sneakily take responsibility off your back, you have said, quote, "We will not ask students, staff, and families to come to Board meetings in person." And the Board meeting is not even on their website right now. This is not being livestreamed.
That's incorrect.
Show me the stream. You also addressed student council advisory, yet when the BCU claimed, talked about what happened to NIA, they said, quote, "We're working with administration to make sure situations like this get handled." Administration is code word for racist institution. We have the right to voice our concerns and stay safe. These kids also have the right to beat a racist kid's ass. That, they also have the right to do that. This whitewashed, brainwashed response is all the evidence you guys need to understand that these black students are not accepted here, and they're afraid and they're subservient. I know I got 15 seconds left, and I'm going to wrap it up, I'm not going to take y'all time, but I'm going to finish this, and I'll be like 10 seconds over time. Lastly, to address these quote-unquote healing circles, right? When George Floyd was murdered, whites just like you asked for everybody to come together and heal. Let's just heal. The first cycle in trauma is not heal. Additionally, it is not the job of the oppressed person to take time out of their life to educate other oppressed people about their oppression. It is y'all's job to unlearn that racist behavior and teach yourselves. So don't have black teachers teaching black students about black people getting treated indifferently. I tried not to swear there for y'all.
Thank you.
I got another piece, but I'm going to let y'all go because y'all let me go. Think about what happened to George Floyd and that last piece that I just mentioned. It's not the black kid's job to teach black kids, man.
Thank you. Jonathan McKellen, McKellen, sorry if I said your name incorrectly.
That's the fastest three minutes ever.
It's a clock.
Hello, my name is Jonathan McKellen, I'm president of Minnesota Justice Coalition. We are part of a collective of organizations that work with families and communities to draft and advance legislation and other policy initiatives around the Capitol and Washington, DC. And we are also the hosts of the event that just happened last week. I wasn't planning on speaking today, however, after listening to the presentation about the education, equity, and excellence, I made some notes and I wanted to throw some questions at you. Some questions that I had regarding that report was how does this work overall inform the policy and make recommendations to the school board? That's one of the things that I did not hear in that report, and I think that it's important going forward, when we, when we find something or there's a problem, that we address it and there's a way for us to fix the problem. And that's one of the things that I'm left not knowing after going through that report. Minnesota Statute 121A dot 031, subdivision 3 states that districts and schools, in consultation with students, parents, and community organizations, to the extent practicable, shall adopt, implement, and on a cycle consistent with other district policies, review and revise where appropriate a written policy to prevent and prohibit student bullying consistent with this section. According to the Government Accountability Office, one in four acts of bullying is motivated by race. This is one of the things that I didn't hear said in that report, but I think it's an important factor when you're making your decisions. And then, what's the long-term plan to combat racism and hate speech in schools? What are the actionable goals, and how does that inform the policy? And I know that we talked about putting together some things, but there's things that are happening right now that need to be addressed, and there needs to be some type of system in place because everything that I've heard, there's not a system in place. We also keep on talking about the video as if this just started, and we are aware that there is more than one video, more than two videos, more than 10 videos. So I don't want people to try to minimize the problem because if we do that, then we're really not going to be able to solve the problem. And next is, there needs to be consequences with teeth for malicious and sadistic behavior regarding race or other protected status. And this is another area that I have not seen. We've drafted some legislation to include this into the anti-bullying statute as well, but it would be nice if some of the school boards, such as yourself, take that initiative. The five key themes that stuck out, stuck out to me as well, and training issue that needs, that needs a commitment investment. Staff do not feel equipped to handle racially charged issues. Students feel the use of racial slurs is prevalent, and staff is lacking the will to ask difficult questions because they are worried about offending diverse students and staff. This signifies a training issue, and we need that type of investment. And part of that event was to try to get that training and investment into your school so we could sit over here and try to solve that problem. I have a little bit more, but I'll respect the time and I appreciate you guys listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Whalen?
Evening. I wasn't planning on talking at all tonight, but then I got home and I spoke to my kids. I have four kids in the district, two of which are LBGQ and identify as non-binary or trans male. My sophomore tonight told me a couple of things that troubled me, and this is what they deal with on a daily basis, and this is happening constantly. They and their partner at school, in the hallways, many kids walking past them saying to their face, "What the F is this?", and then joining their friends and pointing at them. Abhorrent. Their partner, very thin kid, deals with some eating challenges, and somebody walks up to them, gets right in their ear and says, "Fat B." Another student that is a friend of theirs, wears a hijab, is a Muslim, and had racial slurs directed at them today. That's the hallway is a Prior Lake High School. And sorry to say, I want to believe you, I want to believe this isn't a checklist, but it sure feels like it from a parent perspective. Okay, I'll ask a question. From 2014 to 2019, how many incidents of bullying were reported by the district? Do any of you know? It was nine. One from 2017 to 2019. One from 2017 to 2019. I reported more than that myself. So, at the end of the day, I mean, these students don't feel protected by you. I think the teachers have good intentions to protect them, but they don't feel like they have the ability or the power for some reason. So we need to look at ourselves and see where that problem exists. I think it, part of it's a perception problem. I appreciate the work that's being done. I think on paper and in word, it's a good deal, right? But it, but if you don't know how to implement it, it's, it's gonna lead absolutely nowhere. I have friends that went to this district in the nineties. They said, "That's the way it was." So this is not new. Bad behavior's been allowed, and it continues to be allowed. We need to define very clear, like Jonathan said, teeth. And that goes for students, teachers, administration, and parents. There needs to be consequences for parents of students that act this way. I also wanna, I wanna finish with, I think this is a belief problem. You may really believe you're doing the best. But I don't think it is. So I would like, as a parent, we wanna come together on this. We don't just wanna hear, we wanna hear you admit it. You know, Sam has said it out loud, that this, there's a racism problem. I've never heard it from anyone else. We wanna hear it, we want a plan that can be executed, and we wanna be a part of it. Thanks.
Alright, that concludes the open forum. Next up is Laker Pride.
We do have a video this evening. Um, we've got Richie Chukachinsky and Jen Maloney, who are representing Laola de Lago this evening. And I will go ahead and let you take it from there. Thank you, Richie and Jen.
Good evening, Dr. Stallow, Chair Ruel, members of the board. We're very excited to be here. I'm here with Jen Maloney, our dean of students for Laola de Lago. We did have a staff member that was planning on joining us, but had another commitment to come up. We are here to share kind of a exciting partnership that we've embraced this year with the Shakopee Minnewakatin Sioux community. We, as a staff and as a leadership team, felt we would be important for our staff to take part of our Professional Learning Day on October 25th and go over to the Cultural Center. It was an incredible experience. All of our teachers and a few other staff came with, and we had a Dakota language lesson in Emergen, and it was a fabulous connection with our teachers, looking at grammar and how the language was conveyed. And then we had a tour of the, the center. The, one of the tour guides there has a, his nephew is at Laola de Lago. So it was a great experience, and then our fourth and fifth graders followed up with a field trip there. So what we have tonight, tonight to share with you is student voice at its purest, talking about their experiences. We kinda used the windows and mirrors analogy, uh, when you look in, and then what do you see reflected back? So with that, we have a short video here we'd like to share with you. If I can find it. You know where it's at on here? There it is. There it is, okay.
Laola de Lago's staff and students learned about their Dakota neighbors at Ho Chi Minh.
My experience at the Shakopee Cultural Center was very valuable because it made me think about how important my culture is to me. And I think it's very important that we learn about all the cultures, especially the some that are so close to home. It's something that happened in Minnesota, and something that we don't always talk about, but we need to know and learn more about.
It was a great experience for us as our teachers, uh, from Laola de Lago, going to the Shakopee Center. Just because first, we come here, we don't know about history, so knowing about that history and where all our kids are coming from, uh, that helped us to pass through our experience. So that was a very good experience.
Learning language, learning, uh, history, what happened really here in Minnesota, and especially in our surroundings.
And talking about, uh, language, you know, learning language lesson for the Dakota language, it was very interesting to take the student, uh, perspective and, you know, learning the language. And, and for us to, you know, teaching Spanish, it was very interesting to see how some of the words were kinda similar to the language and also the culture. So it was a good reminder of what it's to be a student and learning a new language and the culture.
Windows are an opportunity to see and learn about other cultures and someone else's story. A mirror is an opportunity to see a connection between your own life and somebody else's experience.
Hi, my name is Isabella. When I was in Ho Chi Minh, I learned that the native people used to do these dances. They always used to use them when a kid used to hunt, when they first hunted a first animal, or they sail by a port for shipping. And a mirror is that in my parents' country, El Salvador, they used to do dancing. All the girls used to dress up in beautiful dresses, long dresses, and start dancing in front of them.
A window for me was learning the Dakota teach kids how to hunt at a certain age. In my family, kids learn how to swim, like, they get old enough. A mirror for me was how the Dakota people had special dances and cultural clothing. This reminded me of my mother's town in Mexico by Osotlán, when we celebrated the Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead. Some people paint their faces and have a certain, certain clothing, just like the Dakota people.
A window for me was learning about traditions of the Dakota people, like growing and storing food, as well as cooking traditional food. A mirror for me was thinking about how my grandma once taught me how to make pupusas, a traditional food from Guatemala. Food is an important part of both cultures.
A mirror for me about the Dakota culture and history was the family's stories, because my parents and grandparents always tell me about their childhood and lives. This is similar to the Dakota culture because at Ho Chi Minh, I heard that families would share stories around the fire in winter. This was important to the Dakota, just like it is important to my family.
A mirror for me was the gardening. The Dakota people's gardening was important for them because that's one of the ways that they could eat. A mirror to me because my grandma has a garden, and sometimes I pick strawberries with her. A window was the Dakota people's tradition. What was really interesting for me to learn about was the Dakota people's dancing traditions. It's very beautiful and seems like a way the Dakota people could connect and continue the tradition.
When I went to Ho Chi Minh, I learned that the Dakota people, um, had a bunch of land. But, um, time went by and other groups started taking that land away from them. And over time, over years, they started to have, um, one small little piece of land, and that made me feel sad, because if I was part of the Dakota people, the Dakota group, it would, I, I would feel like we were like the underdogs of other people, and we were like not as good as the rest, and that's what people thought about that. So in my life, I would make sure everyone's valued and no one feels higher or above other people.
Understanding languages and other cultures builds bridges.
We at Laola de Lago believe this is important to a community's well-being and future.
So, um, one other thing to add to that is, um, as part of the, the ongoing work with our, our fifth grade this year, um, isn't going to Woolridge this year too. So, um, all of our fifth graders across the district will have a day at the Shakopee Minnewakatin Sioux community too. So, as you can hear, um, the student voice is pure and, um, unscripted, and those are their words. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity to share that work tonight.
Thank you. Thanks, Richie. Thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Richie.
Okay, the consent item agendas are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda items as listed in your board book?
So made.
By Jonathan, second?
Second.
By Enrique. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes seven-zero. Uh, next up is the resolution for gifts. Just gonna take me a minute to get to it. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution of gifts as listed?
It's all moved.
By Michael, second?
Second.
By Mary. This is a roll call vote. Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Uh, Enrique?
Aye.
Aye. That passes seven-zero. Personnel items. Jim?
Yeah, tonight I have one personnel item. We're bringing forward a proposal to change our substitute teacher pay rates. We, as you know, we have two tiers of substitute teachers. One is those that I would say, um, sub for us infrequently or not enough to make tier two, and then tier two would be our retired teachers and those that have worked for us two-hundred-and-forty hours or more in a semester. And, uh, we did a market study, and we feel that based upon our market study, we need to take a deliberate approach to increase our substitute teacher rates. We try to look this out in the long term, uh, as opposed to in the middle of a pandemic. Other schools have taken a different approach. But we feel that by raising our substitute teacher rates by twenty dollars in each tier will hopefully reduce the number of, of people that may go other places. I don't know if it'll increase it, but, uh, one of the issues that we have is just the pool is just so small. Every school is desperately struggling with substitutes. So, um, it's, it's our attempt to deliberately plan for what this will look like in the short term and the long term. So I bring that forward, raising the substitute teacher wage increase for both tiers.
Okay, um, I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary. I have a couple of questions. Um, and Jim, I should have asked this before, but I'm sure you know this. Average unfilled per week or month?
It, it varies. Um, I, I'll have a slide, uh, when you talk about the Safe Learning Plan that addresses that, but it can range anywhere from... So, I'll have to give you a little context. When we talk about subbing, we're talking about teachers on call, and they fill for both par educators and teachers. And that can be very different on a day between teachers and paras. Uh, it can, it can range anywhere from thirty-five to seventy-five percent, given the day of the week. Uh, I can talk more about that when I get to that Safe Learning Plan slide.
But you feel like this is in the ballpark, or is it like higher than?
Yes, we're, we're, this puts us in the middle. As you may or may not know, uh, some districts, uh, have gone to other measures, especially on Mondays and Fridays, and gone like way up two-hundred or more for a Friday. Uh, we're trying to take the approach that, um, we are increasing it for every day and think about not only now, but six months from now, or, or maybe next year as, as things wind down, so. And trying to be somewhat fiscally responsible around that too. So.
Uh, any other questions? No, seeing none. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes seven-zero. Okay, um, unfinished business? There's none. New business? Strategic Direction Five? Um, is this done? Yep, okay. Provide a safe, secure, supportive environment for social, emotional well-being. Alright, good evening, Board Chair Ruel, Dr. Stallow, members of the board. My purpose of my very brief presentation tonight is to really provide you an overview of the SEL priority work, including our work group, what our work group has been doing to support the strategic plan as a whole, the why behind the importance of this work, give you an introduction into our team members, programming, and some next steps. So our priority work is that E-12, Social and Emotional Learning Resources Curriculum and Structures, will be included and implemented in the district multi-tiered systems of support, our MTSS framework. If you look at, I'm, if you look further, sorry you can't see that, in terms of the strategic directions, ours is number five, which is to provide a safe, secure, and supportive environment that nurtures the social and emotional well-being of all of our learners. So the why behind our work. Back in November of 2018, there was a community engagement event, which was focusing on our strategic directions. And that is where the SEL work came to life and became a new strategic direction. The strategic directions, it incorporates SEL, social emotional learning, for the sake of our students and our staff. And we need that now more than we've ever needed it. So what we do know is that all learning is social and emotional. And in order to learn new ideas, people need to care about it, and it needs to be personal. Students can't learn when their social and emotional needs aren't met. And we also know that our students learn not just through lesson delivery, but through interactions they have with teachers and their peers. Students who have positive relationships with teachers are more likely to learn from them. If you think back to who your favorite teachers were, or the people who made a difference in your life, we can all identify those people. So in order to learn, students have to have self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. So our SEL work, priority work, is embedded in our continuous improvement. It's aligned to our mission as well as school continuous improvement planning, which sets the stage for collaborative learning time and professional development, which influences the student-centered personalized learning that we offer here at Prior Lake area schools. So this is the core SEL team. It includes representatives that are principals and administrators from all four levels, as well as DFC, support staff. This larger group that we met earlier this evening, or this late this afternoon, this is the SEL MTSS leadership team. And as you can see, it's a large group of people. There are teachers included on this group. There are administrators, not only from the district office, but from buildings as well. And our, just as our work, just as we have language art standards and math standards, there are also social, emotional learning standards. And MDE has aligned with a framework called the Castle Standards, and that is what we have done with as a district as well. And it includes five different areas that I had just stated before, that self-awareness, those are in the middle, the orange, the green, and the yellow there. And those all align together as we move forward. Bringing it closer to home, and what are we actually doing here as a district? And I will always say that we are always a work in progress, right? This cycle of continuous improvement that we have. So when you look at all the round dots around that spoke, the bar model is being implement, implemented at Prior Lake High School. Second step at our elementary levels. GPS at our middle school levels. CLR, caring and committed conversations at the secondary level. And for our early, earliest learners, the pyramid model. We are working with our curriculum teams and committees to make sure all students can see themselves in our curriculum. And we are also implementing responsive classroom at our elementary level. As I stated, all of those things are great things to be- As I stated, all of those things are great things to be in place and we continue to work on all of those that, again, for continuous improvement. So what have we done to date? We have done some back-to-school presentations by our LAI directors, where we introduced the CASL standards and common vocabulary. We have worked with building leaders to help develop school continuous improvement plans. So every school continuous improvement plan includes two SEL goals. One is that we'll greet every student at the door every day. And then there's another, that's a site-specific goal, that we as a district services team and LAI team help buildings to support as well. In terms of assessment data, we continue to implement SABERS two times per year, in October and in March, as well as that data is really used to increase staff awareness of student needs and to help us determine next levels of support. Additionally, on the 25th of October, we had Dr. Clay Cook, who is from the University of Minnesota with us, doing two hours of staff development with all of our teachers on prioritizing students' social and emotional well-being and really the importance before COVID and how critically important it is now. So our next steps, as part of that continuous improvement model, we are looking at doing our, we are starting to, I would say for lack of a better term, audit what's going on in schools. We want to make sure that the responsive classroom experience is the same at all of, seven of our elementary buildings. We want to make sure that all the components are in place for all the second-step curriculum that we are implementing. So we're working forward on that work. We are looking to come back and give you more. As I said when I started, it was going to be brief. We're looking to come back as a team to talk with you in the spring and give you more hands-on what's going on at the building level.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? All right, thank you. We'll look forward to it.
Thanks, Deb.
Okay, next up is approval of 2021 Payable 2022 Levy that we just heard about. So we're not going to make Julie repeat everything?
No.
Because we just had, at the beginning of this meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Beginning of this meeting, we just had a detailed presentation. So with that, I will make a motion to approve the 2021 Payable 2022 Levy certification. Do I have a second?
Okay.
By Enrique. Any comments, questions? I'll just make the comment that questions were asked and if you want to review, wind the tape back a little bit at the beginning of the meeting and you'll see all the comments and the presentation. With that, is this a roll call?
No.
Correct? Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes seven zero. And then next up is the final budget approval. Anything else you want to say there? No?
Earlier tonight at the study session, we also reviewed the final levy, or the final budget for the current year.
Okay, so that would actually be the previous meeting if you're looking for this. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the final budget approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary. Any comments or questions? All right, like we said earlier, just go back to the study session for tonight and you'll see the detailed explanation and presentation along with questions that were asked. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Yep. And you're gonna hear this again. This is approval of the 2021-22 school calendar change, which we had in the previous study session as well. Mr. Edwards is here. I will make the motion to approve the school calendar change. Do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Enrique. So I'm gonna say Enrique. Any comments or questions? Detailed explanation was in the study session. No other questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes seven zero. Dr. Edwards is still up. Approval of the 2022-23 school calendar was also presented at the board's study session earlier this evening in detail with minor changes. More explained. I will make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Amy on that one. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven zero. One more for Dr. Edwards. The high school new course proposals were also reviewed at the study session earlier this evening in detail. I will make a motion to approve the high school new course proposals. Do I have a second?
Actually, sorry, just to interrupt for just a second, actually. That was the middle school new course offerings. This is a different.
Oh, this is a different thing, sorry.
Item, yep. But I don't intend to speak long about it.
And this isn't a acceptance, right? This is just.
This is taking board action to approve so that they can go in the registration guide. This is an annual occurrence at the December meeting.
It just doesn't have it in my little packet. That's all. Okay, board action. Sorry.
Yep. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate the opportunity just to speak. These two have gone before the district curriculum advisory at the November meeting. And I'm excited to bring these course proposals forward as we continue our effort to make sure that East M is across our levels. Our science department has put together some very strong course proposals that were included in your course, or in your board packet for tonight's meeting, specifically a biochemistry course, changing its offering from a three-quarter class to a semester class. And they believe that that's going to bode well for participation in that class. A biochemistry and genetics course, a forensics course, and a Big Bang Physics and Beyond course, all again trying to expand the variety of course offerings to deepen the opportunities for students. And then finally, also, we, at the high school, they have been working in a variety of content areas to expand the opportunity for students to take courses where concurrent enrollment is a possibility. And we're excited that earlier in, I think it was November, our member of our, one member of our teaching team received approval through the Minnesota State University system to offer a concurrent enrollment offering in ASL III. So we've had ASL III as a course offering, but now students would be able to take it as concurrent enrollment to earn college credit should they desire.
Awesome. Okay. We need to approve this, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so again, the motion is, they ask is to have it approved so that they can go in the registration guide. Again, at the high school level, it's always a demand-driven process and they'll open the registration process in January, February.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the high school new course proposals. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Michael. Any comments or questions? That's Mary. I heard her right in my ear. Any comments or questions? Well, excited to see Big Bang Physics and ASL. That's awesome. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes seven zero. Safe Learning Plan update?
All right, here's our COVID-19 situation update. The outcomes of this meeting is to understand the latest Scott County and district case rate data along with the Prior Lake staffing information, review our contingency planning, and review current and future COVID-19 testing opportunities for students and staff. This is the month of November, kind of depicting our Scott County case rates. You'll note that there was a sharp increase in our COVID-19 case rates kind of at the beginning of November. Since then, case rates have decreased slightly over the past two weeks. However, we continue to be the highest seven county or the second highest COVID-19 county as far as COVID-19 case rates, second to Anoka County. So we're still pretty high. This graphic comes directly from Scott County and depicts our vaccination data in Prior Lake and Sutton Savage. Among our students, the highest portion of fully vaccinated students is within our 12- to 15-year-old age range. This percentage exceeds 70% both in Prior Lake and in Savage. In the 16- to 17-year-old age groups, just over 50% of those students are fully vaccinated. In the 5- to 11 age range, less than 20% are fully vaccinated. However, this vaccination series was only just recently approved for emergency use at the end of October, so I do anticipate that this percentage will increase over the next several months. And then I also wanted to point out that some of the percentages do increase 100% of the series completed and the one-shot completed, just because these are estimates of the population in Scott County and not raw data. When looking at our school districts data, our student COVID-19 case rates continue to be elevated compared to where we were earlier in the school year. However, we are seeing modest decreases in the last couple of weeks. The closure of Westwood occurred on November 8th, and you can see that's when we had that large spike in student case rates and also in Scott County case rates. The decision to require masking in all buildings among students and staff was also made during this time period. In the last two weeks, we have not moved any classes or sites into distance learning, so that's been very positive. Specific buildings and sites have received communication if we've noticed that the case rates are elevated. While all students and staff remain in masks, we are having ongoing discussions about how long masks will be required. We will continue to review our local and community data points, including COVID-19 case rates and vaccination rates among our students. PLSAS is also working closely with Scott County Public Health to provide a booster clinic opportunity for our staff. Additionally, at Hidden Oaks, we are having our second dose opportunity for our 5- to 11-year-olds. And this will conclude the vaccination events at PLSAS for the 5- to 11-year-olds. After the holiday break, all the students that attended those opportunities will be fully vaccinated when they return to school. So we always talk about this in our Safe Learning Plan, that we don't have a single data point that we monitor to help with our decision-making. Rather, our district incident command team meets weekly and tracks several data points that are listed here. In addition to the COVID case rate numbers shared on previous slides, as of late, we've paid very close attention to our staffing and operational logistics. In addition to the staff concerns with COVID-19 rates, like all other school districts, we are operating with a staffing shortage, which makes the staffing concerns even more severe. I'm gonna pass this over to Jim to talk to some HR dashboard points.
So there's three things that we look at at Incident Command related to staffing. And I know you can't probably see the numbers well unless you look on your computer, but a couple of interesting things here that we pay attention to. Open positions are those positions that we have not been able to fill. That is, that fluctuates, so we do hire, but we also lose. And so it's not always the same 53 positions. What I would say about that is they're almost all support staff positions. They're not licensed positions, administrators, teachers to speak of. There may be one or two in there, but for the most part, they're all support staff positions. So if you think of that, there's 53 open positions that aren't filled, be that custodian, para, secretaries, all of our unlicensed positions. Mostly paras out of that and a good number of custodians as well. The second one is daily staff absences. So this is the, this is total staff absences. That's everybody, 1,250 people, the number of absences during that time period. This is always a five-day lookback from Friday through Thursday, and we have an incident command on Thursday afternoon. It's not normalized to a five-day week. So that's why you see a dip around Thanksgiving of 171 and then back up. So we have a trend that is concerning when you look at the last four weeks, if you normalize that 171 for Thanksgiving. And then the bottom one is the daily subs. Again, this is almost always teachers and paras. So for last week, we had 311 sub requests, of which we only filled 157. Now, if you, if you look at the second graph and the third graph, what that means is almost all of our absences, except for 37 of them, were teachers and paras. So the majority are almost all of our absences, the large majority, are out of those groups that we think of as critical and need to have a sub in there. And then if you combine the fact that our sub rate for paras consistently runs around 50%, and any given week, we may have, you know, 20 to 25 absences per day, then combine 52 from the top with 20 on the bottom, and that's 50 to 70 para openings on any given day. What that means is then teachers are covering for each other or we go without paras. In the teacher realm, they're doing an amazing job of filling in for their colleagues and subbing on their prep. Specialists are being pulled from their music, art, whatever to fill in for a classroom teacher. It's, so it's difficult. We're taking it day by day. But I think it's important that we show the, not only the complexity of this, but the magnitude of the staffing issues that we wrestle with and people are still coming back and standing in front of kids every day and doing their job as best they can, so.
Jim, I think you're gonna speak to this one as well.
On what?
This next one too.
Oh. I was, huh? Okay.
Oh, you weren't. Okay.
Wasn't aware of that, but I can if you want me to. Oh, so, you know, we try to make that a priority and set that up. And I know that you've been instrumental in working with Scott County on being able to do this. And so I think that's just one of the things that we continue to work on. We also, in the event that vaccinations will be mandated and we need to track them, we are working on a process to be able to do that as well and doing the pre-planning on that in case that happens. Still seems to be questionable at this time, but if it happens, I think we'll be ready to put a process in place where we'll be able to do that, so. I don't know if you want to say anything about the testing or the vaccinations?
On the next slide, I've got a little more here. So we did begin offering students and staff the Zoom-enabled at-home vault testing on November 9th. It's just an additional mitigation strategy that we can offer to students and staff to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. If you do have symptoms of COVID-19, we ask that you remain home until you've received your test results. If you're testing because you've had an exposure and you're not vaccinated and have not had COVID-19 in the last 90 days, we ask that you wait for your COVID-19 results prior to returning to school, simply because we are having a very elevated community transmission rate right now. And we have good news. In January, the district will have access to rapid testing options for families. We will not get these tests until towards the end of December, but I hope to give more information to our families about those rapid testing options that will be available come January, so they won't have to wait multiple days to get those test results if they're having symptoms of COVID-19. We recognize that the closure of Westwood Elementary was sudden and unexpected. The COVID-19 case rates surged and we were all a little taken aback. As a result, we're closely monitoring our data, working harder at providing proactive communication to our families when we see COVID-19 rates increase rapidly in buildings. As a proactive measure, we do ask that families have contingency plans in place should a classroom or a school need to move to distance learning. Does anyone have any questions? Or Teri, anything to add?
No, I just, thank you, Kate. And Jim, thanks for adding that piece around the staffing. I think that, you know, we know that on our dashboard, we're tracking the cases, so our public is able to take a look at the number of new cases, positive cases, both from the student and the staff perspective. But as we've shared with you in the past board, operationally, that's what we're also worried about, is being able to ensure that we can continue to have our kids in school every day and have the staff to support them. So, I think, Jim, what your data shows is numbers, and behind those numbers is, needs to be an acknowledgement of what 1,300 employees have been doing now for almost two years to support one another, to sub during their preps, to cover shifts because colleagues are out, and to continue to keep focused on the needs of students and student learning every single day. So, really appreciate them, and it's not easy, and we are hoping to be able to make it to winter break.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Teri?
I understand that we have, Jim, I understand we have staff shortages, which exacerbate the issue of absent staff in general, but when you compare the current situation and the number of staff that are absent on a daily basis with pre-pandemic years, is there a noticeable significant difference with the number? And I'm also saying that because the COVID numbers for staff are fairly low, so I'm wondering, is the impact just that much more exacerbated because of the lack of the open positions that haven't been able to be filled?
Yeah, I think it's a combination of both. Our absences are up, obviously, and, you know, part of that is, it may not be a staff who tests positive, but their child may have tested positive or needs to be quarantined, and now that staff member is not there. We've also seen more of a revolving door of people coming in, some people getting hired and not even showing up the first day, or they're one day and gone. It's much more fluid than I have ever seen it before with the ins and outs, but absences are up, and what I worry about is just the fatigue after 600 and some days for those that, you know, the 70 or 80% that are here all the time, the other 20 we're trying to recruit, right? But I worry about that as time goes on, because just the wear and tear. So, yep.
Thanks. I did have one follow-up question, and that was on, I know we just made a decision to raise the rates for our substitute teachers. When will that go into effect? Is that immediately, and do we expect some relief from that?
Tomorrow.
Immediately? Okay, good.
We have a letter to Teachers on Call done already. They're waiting until that happened, and then they will put that in play.
Will we see a report on if we did improve the number of substitutes we were able to get by January, end of January, maybe?
We can look at it before and after and see what it does.
Great, thank you.
I was just going to ask, Kate, you've kind of put a little carrot out there for our community and our families when you just mentioned we are continually assessing the mask requirements. Can you just kind of walk through thought process? I don't expect you to give any timelines, but just kind of what are the factors that will go into that decision?
You know, one of the things we've always talked about is the opportunity to be vaccinated, and our 5 to 11-year-olds make up a huge portion of our community. And so, the hope is, is that when they become fully vaccinated, hopefully, we will see an overall decline in our COVID-19 case rates. We're also looking at just what our school data tells us. Are we having a lot of transmission? Right now, we're having more transmission, I would say, among our athletes at the high school, and so we're really looking at a lot of those data points to help guide us with what we would like to do, and we'll rely heavily on our partners at Scott County and Minnesota Department of Health to help us guide any decision-making moving forward.
One of the questions we certainly have, you know, is what's going to happen after that winter break? But to Kate's point, I think she's got a subgroup that's going to meet to take a look at. You know, we had that subgroup actually planning to meet before that surge in November to really look at the 5, 3, 11-year-olds, because at that time, we weren't masked at the high school. And then we needed, because of the case rates, to do the masking. So, we'll have the group look at that to see, you know, what does it look like a couple of weeks after winter break? Where are the cases in the county and locally? And that percent, what's the percent of students that are vaccinated as well?
One of the things that Lisa Brodsky did tell us, who's the Director of Public Health at Scott County, is that she does predict a fairly sizable surge right after winter break, because a lot of people, you know, chose not to do a lot of their holiday plans last year, and so a lot of people may opt to do that, and so she did predict a bit of a surge. So, I think that will help weigh a little bit in maybe thoughtfully thinking about when we would make a change and kind of monitor what's happening before we would make a change.
Yep.
Question. And I guess the good news there is that this year vaccinations are on the table, and last year they weren't. So, that's the good news. I have a question about the ZIP code vaccination data. And maybe you said this, Kate, so if you did, I'm really sorry, but is this strictly by city, or is it the ZIP codes, is it Prior Lake and Savage residents that go to ISD 719?
So, this is just ZIP code data. We are working with our IT department to see if they can connect with Minnesota Immunization Information Connection, which is called MIC. There's a possibility that they could take Infinite Campus in MIC and kind of link them. They're running into some roadblocks, but they've been working really hard to get those two systems to talk, so we could actually pull live vaccination data for our schools and our age groups here at Prior Lake Savage area schools.
Thanks. I appreciate you doing that, and I know you're working with IT. We know that there are other districts that their systems are able to talk to each other, and that's why that's been prioritized, because that is an important data point. Also, just wanted to follow up with the staffing, and I know you all know this, but I just want to go on record saying the staffing concerns and the fatigue and the stress is not a PLSAS thing. Every conversation that I have with superintendents across the state and across the metro, it's the same thing, and it doesn't make it better at all, but I just know that right now, the sub shortage, the what teachers and staff across the state and the country have to be doing right now is difficult. So, again, I think folks are looking forward to a break, a well-deserved break.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Oh, sorry, Enrique.
Thank you. So, thank you for your presentation. Towards the end, you mentioned that rate of community spread is elevated. Looking at the slide, I think it's Slide 3, where we have the Scott County COVID case rate. So, what portion of the case rate, what's the rate of community spread? Perhaps we can start there. Is this reflective of community spread?
Yes, it's reflective of community spread. So, even though our case rates are coming down, we're still well above 100. And if you look at last year, you know, 50 was kind of our benchmark to remain in person. So, overall, we're still very high as far as COVID-19 rates in our community.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then kind of piggybacking on the question of ZIP codes, perhaps there will be an opportunity to dig down a little bit further into the demographics of the people that are in the ZIP codes with those that are vaccinated versus those that are not. So, perhaps partnership with Scott County MDH or Scott County Health to put together different programming to communicate with those, knowing that we have more than 60 languages spoken in this district. So, how do we actually get the information and get to where the people are and meet them where they are?
Yeah, they've been prioritizing that 5 to 11 clinic, and they've gone to every school district to make sure they could provide that opportunity. And they also are experiencing staffing shortages. They're actually going to be offering an opportunity on December 22nd, and we're going to be offering some of our staff to help. They have a Scott County clinic, and they asked for our help, because that's one of the challenges they're running into too, is the vaccine isn't the shortage right now. It's the actual people that give the vaccine that they're running into.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
Next up is approval of combined polling location resolution. This is an annual resolution that we need to do each and every year. The resolution establishes combined polling places for multiple precincts and designates hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on a day of a statewide election. Oh, jeez, I just lost my computer. Hang on. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So, moved.
Second?
Second.
By Mary. This is a roll call vote. Martha, did I read enough of it? I read it out of the board pack. I did, thank you. Amy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Aye. That passes 7-0. Next up is our annual MSBA Leadership Conference registration. I think Martha has contacted us all via email, and we are all registered for that. It is in-person, going to be in-person, not virtual this year. So, we usually go down as, you know, try to get together at some point and go down. I mean, not get together, we meet down there, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Thursday, January 13th, or Friday, January 14th, we are registered. If you guys could let me know whether or not you're planning on attending, I would appreciate that, because you are all registered, so just to give us that. Then, next up is the organizational meeting, and there's a couple of things added to the board packet later, yesterday or today, early this morning, if you guys want to look at that. Basically, you know, this is the organizational meeting will be in the beginning of January. It's where we have officers for the year and then the committee assignments. I put the current committee assignment roster in there. If anyone is having any problems in getting to meetings or would like a change, a lot of times, we don't do a lot of switching kind of in between the middle here, but definitely open if people want to make some changes. Or if you can't meet when the event, you know, some of these are during the day, some are 9 o'clock on a Friday. If you're having a hard time getting to those, let me know, and I can put forth changes to be approved in the January meeting. Just in reflection on some of the stuff over this last year, I think I'm going to be putting forth some changes or asking for changes possibly to be made about some duties for the chair, trying to lighten the load a little bit for one person. It's a lot for one person, to be quite honest. So, I think there's some things policy-wise that we can change and maybe lighten the load a little bit. So, I'm going to be looking at that over the next couple of weeks and bringing those forward for discussion in our organizational meeting. Any, did I miss anything? No? Any other comments, questions on that? Okay. Board policy review. Are these the same ones that were in the study session?
Yes.
They are, no? Okay. So, I guess with that being said, I would consider this both a board policy review and a first read. So, I think we should take these. If there's anything in particular that, are we okay to speak? I think we can speak to each, if we need to, speak to each one of these. Some of them have changes, some don't. So, I think maybe we should take them one at a time here. Employment of all staff.
Yeah, I can just walk through each of these. The employment of all staff, Policy 404, we are not recommending any changes at this time, just updating it to show that it's been reviewed more recently. So, nothing there. You want me to keep going?
Yeah.
406 has some significant changes. I sent an email out today in relation to that, and that email contained the red line version, so if you wanted to see the changes between what was and what we're proposing, it's very much in there. We also, because of the nature of this one, and it's a significant policy in relation to this, we did have it reviewed by legal counsel, and those notes were in that email to you as well, as far as what they recommended, different than what MSBA had recommended. So, there's a lot there.
Yeah. So, and then I think one other thing to note too, 406 is where, at the end of it, we have the form for data requests?
Yes. So, in the past, this district has taken another policy, 722, about public data requests, and they plunked it in as a form in this policy, and we're proposing, recommending that we split those back out. Public data requests are a significant part of many of our days right now, lots of hours in time, and I think we need to delineate that more specifically as far as what our processes are and what our policy is around those data requests.
Yeah, and I think it'll be easier for the public to find, because it'll just be listed as that, because sometimes I struggle, I can't remember where it is. So, I do think that's a good thing going forward, and that hasn't been reviewed yet, but...
That is, no.
But it'll be...
That was a decision that we just made as questions were asked and observations were given, and so that will come forward next time.
Yep. Any comments or questions on 406? Yep, Mary?
I sent in some questions too, and, you know, and I didn't get a chance, I can't speak for anybody else, because it came out later today. And because there were so many significant changes, I'd like, and again, the red line version came out later, that I'm going to suggest that we actually leave this for the next study session potentially to actually discuss or at least understand the changes and not just push it through the 1, 2, 3 type of policy review.
Well, I would say that none of our policies are actually pushed through. They actually go through four readings. So, you know, I think there's some sense of urgency with this. I also think that we had legal review on it. I don't think there's anything wrong with us having more robust discussion at the next, you know, time, because it did come out late. I don't think there's any problem with doing that. I would not want it to slow down. I think staff's pretty much noted that there's for sure a need to do this. So, I think with the understanding that next time it's on, we'll have a robust discussion, and people will have enough time to view it, and if changes need to be made, we can do that. Okay?
The upside of four readings.
Correct.
And then the next two, 426 and 427, have no changes. And 428, at this time, the employee use of social media policy, there is not an MSBA model policy. This is one that the district has created. I talked with Director Malazo today, and we discussed this. We believe it's a very good policy and consistent with what we're doing in the district right now. I think there's, this is one that we make note of at the beginning of the year. It's part of a slide deck that all building administrators share with their staff and talk about the importance of this policy and understanding it. We also put it, if you paid attention to our HR newsletters, three or four times in the last year, we made mention of this, just because of the nature of social media right now and the number of issues that crop up with that. So, we would propose no changes to this policy.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
Again, I put through a couple of questions. I'm not sure if you read them or you received them.
Yeah, the one question, what do, how do we monitor that, or what do we do about that with this policy? We really look at educating, and then if we feel that there is something that is not in compliance with this, we investigate, right? I mean, we're making it more of an emphasis all the time. Like I said, we talk about at the beginning of the year with staff. We drop it in our HR newsletters regularly about the importance of it and make sure you're reading it. And then, and we've had times where there's, we need to look into people's use of it. And oftentimes, they tell us, yeah, we saw it, but we didn't read it. So, as far as the follow-up on that, that's what we do. We try to comply with it, educate around it, and then we investigate if necessary.
My questions were also, you know, how do we know and what is our enforcement action of it, not just please... Not just, please don't do it if you make a statement like that in a policy, to say that personal use, personal social media use on a district network or a district-provided device is prohibited, and yet, we're not maintaining the logs or anything like that to actually ensure that that's the case. That's a little concerning, and I brought up a case where privately, it was pretty well-established that that was the district's responsibility to, if you're gonna make that statement, that we have to actually have a mechanism in place to literally enforce it. And I also asked about the two related policies of 515 and 524, because they are kind of co-dependent on this one. And if we couldn't go back and review this and review those with it to make sure that we were consistent, and also, if we did make a change to this one, that we would also be consistent in making the change to the other two, or at least knowing that they were being co-dependently reinforced.
Sure. Yeah, I talked with Director Malazo about that, and I think from the employee side of it, we can sure, if that's the board's appetite, to pull all those together and look at those collectively, we can sure do that. I think this one stands alone on its own, as it is right now. I think it's a good policy. We've used it, we've reinforced it, we've investigated, all of those things. I think on the technology side, that would probably be questions for Marcus. I do know that, you know, as far as what mechanisms he has in place, I do know that there are some social media platforms that are globally not available during the school day. And I think it's a perspective from administration, you know, with your guidance as to what you want to see. Do we educate and re-educate if somebody does something? Or do we, or are we very restrictive on the front end and not allow things to happen? And I think our perception has been, we educate and not clamp down. I mean, that's kind of the, being a technology person, right? You can either open it up and educate around what's appropriate and what's not, and have policies in place and expectations, or you can clamp down and be very restrictive. And I think there's more tools that could be used, but we quite honestly have not used them, because we've been more on the more open, educate, and then, hold people to that expectation. I don't know if that answers your question, but I think it's probably more of a, if it's a technology, what tools are available? That might be more of a Marcus question that I can take back and.
It's kind of more of a legal question, too, because I'm referring to the incident that happened in another high school, where a teacher was using, or actually, an administrator in that case, was using the social media platform in a nefarious way, and they found out after it already impacted students, because the district was not being proactive with making sure that the activity on the device or on the network was being policed. And so, it did come back to them. So, my question is, is if we're gonna put on there that that type of activity is prohibited, what is our liability?
Sure.
What are we expected to do? There are, you know, retention rules and things like that for the data that goes on the device as well as on the network. And it's not really, it's not really discussed here in that level. And so, you know, I am worried about not only the district's liability, but our ability to not only protect the staff and the students from just a, obviously, ethical standpoint. So, and I'm not saying that what we're, you know, anybody's done anything. I'm just worried about the precedent that we set to say, we're gonna train you on this, but we're not actually going to enforce it, that sort of thing, as far as.
But we enforce it.
Enforce.
Yeah, we enforce it anytime it's brought forward.
Anytime it's brought forward. So, something has to happen first, that sort of thing. So, that's my, that's the nature of my question, and maybe that does require Marcus to come here.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea. I think it'd be a good idea to have Marcus. He could talk about the filters that we use, that his team monitors. So, I think that's great. Just, and again, I know you brought some questions, but that was at, I think, 8:40 last night, so our team didn't have a lot of time today to prepare for those answers. But I think it'd be fine if Marcus, we can ask him to come back the next time these policies are brought forward.
Would it be also appropriate in this case to have legal review of that?
I can sure ask the question of them to say, based on our policy.
Enough of us want to have it looked at legally? Do you want to have it looked at legally?
Yeah, if that's the board's appetite.
All right. Yeah, let's just have them looked at legally. Okay. Next up, is that still you, Jim?
I think that's all the fours.
Transportation? No changes? Okay.
So, just for the listening public, Jim Delwo, Director of Transportation and Operations on the policies that have his name by him, is recommending no change. Thank you.
So, that's 707, 708, 709, all of them, 803? Are we talking security of buildings and grounds?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. 804, 810, is there any questions on any of those? Okay. Seeing none. We'll move on to second, no, there's no second reading. Board policy approvals, so we're at the approval of the ones listed, since they have been on here for four times in a row. I'm gonna ask that we take them all at once. Is everyone all right with that? Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the board policy approvals of 401, 404.1, 405, 414, 417, 419, and 902. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Michael. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes 7-0. Superintendent report?
Thank you very much. At Prior Lake-Savage area schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. And tonight, I'd like to highlight some of the work in which we've been engaged. You've heard a great deal tonight about our equity and inclusion work that has been done in the district, and we certainly have continued work to do, specifically so that our students feel the impact of their work as we move forward, and that staff have more ability to and equipped to handle racially charged issues. This is not work we can do alone, which is why we will be working in collaboration with the cities of Savage, Prior Lake, and Cedar River, as well as Spring Lake Township. And we will begin that work Thursday evening, December 16, from 6:00 to 8:00, at the Club Prior in Prior Lake. The event is an opportunity to discuss racial equity and racial healing in our communities. Local race equity facilitator, Seema Pathino, will help facilitate the discussion. The event is free and open to the public. Light refreshments will be served, and parking is limited, so please carpool if you can. Our kindergarten information sessions were held last week, and we're looking forward to opening online enrollment for our kindergarten families on January 13. We're also planning some exciting events designed for kindergarten students. On March 10, Connect to Kindergarten will take place. This will be an opportunity for families to visit the elementary school in their attendance boundary area or La Olada Lago at Greenwood. Students will receive a book about kindergarten and meet our fantastic kindergarten teachers. And then, on May 16, there'll be a kindergarten open house. We hope to be able to open our doors for tours of our kindergarten classrooms, and we'll certainly continue to let our community know about those events. And then, finally, just a word about winter break. As you know, we have extended winter break by one day with the school board, which the school board has now formally approved. This is due to an increase, as we talked about earlier, in teacher and support staff case rates, combined with a severe lack of substitutes availability and overall staffing shortages. Winter break now begins December 22 through December 31. Classes will resume on January 3. My hope is that all of our employee groups, our families, and our students will be able to have a safe and healthy winter break, and will be able to start the new year re-energized. Thank you.
Okay. Any administrative reports? None? Board reports? Anyone?
Sure. Yes. Michael and I both had the opportunity to serve as delegates to the Minnesota School Board Association Delegate Assembly. Took place December 2 and December 3. Lots of robust discussion, mostly centering around equalization of our school finances, school board finances. We all recognize that there is a substantial budget surplus, we'll call it, at the state. And we have many mandates, most of which, as we listened earlier from Director Singh's report, underfunded or unfunded. So, utilizing these reserve funds, MSBA was fully in support of, so that we can educate all learners to reach their full potential in whatever capacity that that looks like to reach their full potential. So, lots of focus on finance, lots of focus on equity, lots of focus on making sure that we do the needful things to elevate our learners.
Awesome. Anyone else?
Yeah, I attended virtually this C meeting last Friday, which is Schools for Equity and Education, and the Senate Tax Committee Chair presented on the surplus for us and really asked questions of members of C, school district members of C, around what we might advocate for in terms of that surplus. So, much of what you're talking about, we also talked about. And the other thing was the, which was on the front page of many newspapers today, was the $1 billion unemployment insurance trust fund that would potentially be forgiven, which would most certainly impact school districts, ours tremendously. So, if that were forgiven, our budget might look a little different, and it's definitely on the table, so.
Anyone else?
I'll just, I'm sorry, I'll just update that. The Public Engagement Legislative Committee's been working with a combination of the resources that they all referenced in terms of drafting our 2022 legislative platform, so that we can approve it as a board, once reviewed, and then, take it to our legislators. Also, Stacy and Dr. Stowe and I had the opportunity to attend the AMSD meeting. Most recently, Dr. Yohru Williams of St. Thomas presented on the importance of Reimagine Minnesota and the important role of social studies right now in our classrooms and in the curriculum. And then, the additional meeting for AMSD, which is board member-focused, was about legislative action coalitions and ways to bring more stakeholders into your legislative work, so.
We had Community Advisory Council last week. Most notable thing out of there is Kids Company will be coming with some minor fee adjustments that they're gonna be recommending, probably at our, in the January, I think.